All right. Thank you for attending the Placerville City Council meeting of Tuesday, August 13th. If you all rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gotberg?
Here.
Councilmember Sarah Gussa will be noted as absent. Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Here or no?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have no ceremonial matters, no closed session tonight. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move the agenda.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passes unanimously. And that brings us to item six, announcements and presentations to the public. Brief comments by the city council.
I enjoyed National Night Out.
Me too.
I was not there. Sorry, I had a prior engagement.
Yes, National Night Out was a great event. I had some really good conversations with neighbors. That's always a great event. I also attended the City of Placerville Community Wildfire Resilience Strategy Technical Advisory Meeting. Yes, I have to look to remember all that. So that was a kickoff meeting and, of course, we all went to the Main Street Special Events Workshop. That's what we've been up to. So we will move to item 6.2, introduction of the new Director of Community Services, Dennis Nishihara, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and council staff. It's good to have Dennis here, well, kind of here. Dennis, his official start is not till next Monday, I'll let you know that, but he's been doing a very good job spending some time with our interim director, Mr. Yule. And so since he was here today for some other things, we had a little trip on the Eldorado Trail this morning, and he's been doing a lot of things visiting people, Goldwood Park and other areas for the last couple of days. So welcome, Dennis. I'm not going to go into a whole lot. We're going to be putting something out on social media, but Dennis comes to us with many years, about a good 20 years of service in the parcel recreation field. Currently, he is with our Arcade Creek Recreation Department. Thank you. He was with, started, I think, with the City of Roseville, is that correct, Dennis? And good experience, good enthusiasm. We are very excited to have Dennis with us. And I should mention also, we will miss Mr. Yule hiding back there in the background. He's been, it's fantastic to have a resource like that to be able to rely on and come back. And Steve has saved me on many occasions over the last month and a half or two months here that he's been here. Please get to know Dennis. Like I say, his first day is next Monday, the 19th. And set up an appointment with him and the council members, if you like, or public that have dealings with recreation and parks. And he'll be happy to meet with you. You can get to know him. I don't know how much he'll be able to answer questions for you about recreation and parks on his first day, but he's learning fast and done a good job going through things with Steve and figuring out where we are and what we need to do. So with that, welcome, Dennis. Great to have you here.
Thank you very much. I look forward to serving and really it's kind of in my heart to be able to get to the forefront of kind of connecting with the community and doing what needs to be done. So I'm thankful to Steve for all his knowledge and hard work and everyone that I've met so far. It's been an amazing experience. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Looking forward to it.
Great, welcome aboard, Dennis. We're excited. And Steve, we'll miss you again. All right. Move on to 6.3, consider acknowledging and filing the annual financial report and independent auditors' report and single audit and independent auditors' report for fiscal year 2223. Mr. Warren?
Members of the council, tonight we have Andrew Roth, CPA and partner of the Poon Group to present the report tonight. So with that, I'll hand it over to Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. So we'll have a presentation to present fiscal year ended June 30, 2023 financial statements. Some of what we're going to go over is going to be the scope of work and timing, the required communications required by the auditing standards, AUC 260, an overview of the, kind of a general overview of the financial statements, not more high level, not too deep, but we do have some explanations on a few items, some key financial indicators and pension OPEB information, as well as some of the audit results. So for the audits that we are engaged to perform with the city is going to be your annual financial report. This is going to be the general financial audit of the city, the compliance audit, that's going to be your single audit, the federal expenditures. And also, we do an agreed prompt procedure over the GAAN appropriation of the spending limit. So some required communications. So auditing standard requires that there are responsibilities of both the auditor and management. On management's part, management's responsible for the financial statements. That's the document we are accepting today. They're responsible to present the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America, known as the U.S. GAAP, to adopt sound accounting policies, to establish and maintain internal controls or financial reporting and compliance, then to provide evidence supporting the amounts and disclosures in the financial statement. Management's also responsible for the fair presentation of the financial statements that are free from material misstatements, whether due to fraud or error, and management's responsible to prevent or detect fraud. We, as the auditors, were responsible to perform the audit in conformity with the auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and the standards applicable to the financial audits contained in the government auditing standards, known as GAAS, issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. We are responsible for communicating with those charged with governance. Some important, some of those communications we're going to have next, but there is also a letter that you should see that was, is being accepted with, it's called the AUC 260 there, where we kind of go over this and just some other items. But we have some bullet points to discuss some of the main topics there. We also are responsible for assessing the audit risk of internal control or financial reporting and then determining the fair presentation of the financial statements and at the end of the audit rendering an opinion on the financial statements and issuing recommendations to management, if any. So as for the required communications with those charged with governments, significant aspects that are required to communicate are going to be your significant accounting policies. So in the financial statement, you'll note Note 1. If you want like the most general overview of the accounting of the city, just different aspects, kind of like of the reporting entity, Note 1 is really like a really good note to kind of get like just a general understanding without getting into the numbers, but understanding kind of how it works. So that's going to be a very good note. So you will note this year that the city did implement Gatsby Statement 91, that's the conduit debt obligations, 94, the public-private and public-public partnerships and availability payment arrangements, 96, subscription-based information technology arrangements, and 99, the omnibus 2022. There were not any significant implementations required from those standards. I believe that were based on our review, that nothing that actually applied that came, that was required. So for accounting, significant estimates, to be able to prepare a financial statement, there are certain estimates that management must make in the preparation of those financial statements. And for these financial statements, some of those estimates include the fair value of investments, the depreciation of capital assets, that's going to be your useful life, how long you think the capital asset will last for, the net pension liability and OPEB liabilities. Those are estimates, but those are mainly determined by the actuary and also policies that were determined by CalPERS. So and you will note that there is one estimate that changed, which we'll all discuss on the pension. So sensitive disclosures, so the Note 1, the summary of significant accounting policies. Also 8, which is going to be your pension, that's going to be your public employee's retirement system, you 9, which is going to be your post-retirement medical care benefits, known as OPEB. Note 10, that's going to be your classification of fund balances and other fund disclosures. Number 14, that's going to be contingencies, that's any kind of liabilities or anything of that nature that might, needs to be disclosed. Number 15, that's going to be your PFA, limited obligation revenue, bond defaults, that note's not new, I think it might have been updated a little bit, but it's been there for the last few years, but it still is something you should look at. And number 16, there was a prior period adjustment due to a change in accounting for grants receivable. I think that it's explained within there and I will go into it a little bit further when we go into the single audit. Also, some other items we need to communicate, misstatements. There were no corrected or uncorrected misstatements reported. The prior period adjustment was proposed by management, they're being analyzed so that wouldn't be considered a corrected misstatement. That was something that was proposed by management. The consultation with other accountants, management informed us that, and to our knowledge, there were no consultations with other accountants regarding auditing and other matters. This would be kind of a, kind of like auditor shopping, trying to get the best opinion. There was not any of that. And also, there was no significant difficulties in dealing with management. Disagreements with management, there were none. There were no disagreements with management in terms of accounting treatment or audit procedures performed. So an overview of financial statements. So this is going to be your net position at June 30, 2023, for your government activities. So your assets, there was an increase of about $6.8 million to 91, it's about $92 million in assets. The main pieces were increases in cash, about $2 million in each of the Development Impact Fund and the Measure L Fund, as well as some capital assets. Your deferred outflows of resources, so I'm kind of going to, I'm going to kind of group deferred outflows of resources and deferred inflows of resources, kind of explain those together. I think once we get to next year, you'll start having reasonably close, it won't change as much, but what happened was, and I believe it was fiscal year 21, there was a significant, when COVID happened, there was a significant increase in investment income at CalPERS. And then fiscal year 22, that reversed. So last year, you saw the pension liability decrease, but then this year, you saw the pension liability increase. And as part of the CalPERS determination of, and because of this investment, the difference between the actual and projected investment earnings, typically what happens is that is, they'll be amortized over a five-year period. So from year to year, you'll, you see that flip from a deferred inflow last year to deferred outflow this year. And also to take into account also that there was the change in assumption, which was a decrease in the annual return on investment figure for CalPERS from, it was 7.15 to 6.9 this year. That was something that was already planned by CalPERS. They have a staggering of different rate decreases to be more realistic on the actual returns that will be received. So that also did lead, that also did lead to the increase in the liability. So the liabilities, main increase is going to be related to your pension and both the investment loss for the year, as well as the, as well as that change in the discount rate. So, but you will note that, I'll discuss it later, that if you were to look at like your funded ratio, which is amount of like assets versus the fiduciary net position, your fiduciary net position of assets you have to pay off the liability for pension, if you take out last year's funding ratio, it's pretty much the same for like five years straight. So you're pretty much in line, but there was that blip from COVID. So you'll just note that there was that. So you do have, your deferred outflows of resources ended with $7.6 million, and then your liabilities did increase mainly related to pension to about $28 million. Then you deferred inflows decreased specifically related to that, the change, the investment, the investment earnings on pension investments, less than that actual discount rate, the return rate. So that you will note that. Then going forward, you got net investment in capital assets. That number is going to be your capital assets net of any related debt. That did increase about $3.6 million from the, from the kind of completion of projects. And I believe if you look in the MDNA, there's some highlights in the projects that were worked on. It's pretty at the top. So your restricted net position, this is going to be anything that is restricted by legislation or a third party enabling grants. That increased, that decreased a little bit to about $12 million. And then your unrestricted deficit, which it decreased to about $9.6 million. So and that deficit relates to your, the unrestricted net position is, relates to ongoing obligations to citizens and debtors. And although it is a deficit balance right now, pretty, a lot of cities have deficits, really starting after when the Gatsby 68 came into effect, where you actually had to start reporting those pension liabilities. A lot of cities went into that deficit and they're just trying to get the, going in there, trying to go in the opposite direction. So a deficit, a lower deficit is a good thing when you look at this. So it was an increase, a decrease in that deficit of about $6.6 million. So your change in net position here, you'll note, so you got a, so your program revenues, your program revenues are going to be operating grants, capital grants, and charges for services. These are items that the city can, has, that you can directly relate to expenditures of the city. So you'll note when we go into a later ratio, that these are items, these are not kind of general revenues, that these are actually like specifically, you have a grant, it's related to this expenditure you have, or the charges for services is for this expenditure. So just note that you did have an increase of about $400,000 to $2.5 million for the charges for services. The operating grants increased slightly to $723,000, and then your capital grants and contributions increased to about $4.8 million. So this is going to be different capital grants related to any kind of like street and road construction and different things like that. So your total program revenues increased about $3.2 million this year to about $8 million. So your expenses for the year and your change in net position of government activities, so you got to understand when we look at this statement here, you're not looking at your general fund where you budget. This statement actually includes a lot of those changes in actuarial determinations and CalPERS investment earnings. So you will see that investment, that expenses decreased, and a lot of this has to do kind of with how those conversion entries happen. You'll note that, so this isn't like something where you see a budget, like actual expenditures, this is a more, this is affected more by those actuarial determinations. So, but when we get to the general fund, you'll see the fund that's actually budgeted, where you can actually see the items that relate to what you, so some of this is based on outside circumstances. So, and as I said, I think next year will get pretty even, but COVID had this big blip. So the expenses this year did, did decrease to $9.7 million, and so the net cost of services also decreased so that you, there was only a difference of about 1.6 between expenses and those charges for services or grants that are specifically related or you can allocate specific to expenses, but also including those pension and OPEB changes in actuarial determinations. The general revenues, so this is going to be kind of your, any kind of tax, property tax, sales tax, franchise, TOT tax, that's going to, and also any kind of investment earnings, that did decrease slightly to 13.9 million. Transfers, about the same of $186,000. So overall, your change in net position for the year was $12.4 million in the government activities. So your net pension of the business type activities. So cash increased about 1.1 million to about $74.4 million. The big reason for this is going to be kind of the, it's going to be related to a decrease in the operating expenses for both sewer and water for the year, as recorded in the financials. And then also, you're going to note a similar trend as the, but much smaller as, from the government activities, because more of the pensions on the government activities side, but you'll note that there was an increase in deferred outflows, decrease in deferred inflows. Outflows at 2.2 million, inflows at 1.2 million. And then the liabilities did increase also similarly related to pension to about 848.7. So your net investment in capital assets increased slightly to 20.9 million. Restricted net positions, about 2.8 million, and unrestricted is about 3 million for the, for the business type activities. And that unrestricted portion eventually will be put into a, when you need to replace capital assets or infrastructure for the sewer, sewer or water lines, that's what that will go into. So next slide. So your change in net position, business type activities, you see stayed pretty steady. So you have the charges for services, that's 9.6. Then the capital grants contribution decreased slightly to about $75,000. So it was about a $117,000 increase on those program revenues that are allocable to those expenses. So you had about $9.7 million in program revenues offset by the expenses, which stated there were decreases in operating expenditures for both sewer and water. So you had about $7.5 million expenses. And so that net cost of service, so your revenues were over the expenses by 2.1 million. And then when you add in those general revenues, so that would be related to, say, property tax, I think on this portion, it's sales tax measures, that's about 1.5 million. Slightly, it stayed about, decreased slightly, but not much. And then your transfers changed slightly to a transfer out of $186,000, but overall, your change in net position did increase 3.5 million for those business type activities. Onto the general fund. So the general fund assets, this is going to be your budgeting fund. So this is the main fund that's budgeted by the city. Increased slightly to about 5.5 million to assets. Liabilities also increased slightly to 607,000. Your non-spendable fund balance, so your non-spendable fund balance relates to the prepaid's. It's, your non-spendable fund balance is going to be a fund balance that is not in spendable form. So this is going to be your prepaid's, your inventory, and your advances to other funds. So that was, that increased slightly to 1.919 million, about $17,000 increase. So your unassigned fund balance, that's going to be your rainy day fund. We'll go into a ratio in a little bit to discuss the rainy day fund. That increased slightly to about $3 million. So overall fund balance in the general fund, $4.9 million. That would be, so on to the next slide. So the general fund change in fund balance, this is going to be kind of the main budgeted, the budget of the, of the city. So this is, there are less actuarial assumptions in this. That's going to be mainly on your statement of activities for your government activities side. So your revenues increased slightly to 11.3 million. Expenditures increased slightly to about $1 million to 10.2 million. So revenues over expenditures, about 1.1 million. Your other financing sources and uses, that was any kind of transfers, any kind of net investment, and mainly transfers and other items in there. So that's 627,000 out, other financing uses when you netted. But your change in overall fund balance for your general fund was about, an increase of about $513,000.
Andrew, if I may, so that $512,000 surplus is primarily due to charges for services experiencing an increase of $490,000 or about 60% increase. Part of that is because of the recovery coming out of the pandemic.
So some of those key financial indicators. So when I was explaining earlier, the difference, how these expenses and the program revenues work together, where the program revenues, I know the ratio, I think next year it's going to be more, after we get through that COVID blip, it will be more comparable. But those program revenues, there was, as noted, were about $8 million and those expenses were about 9.7. So the net cost of services was about 1.6 million, and tax revenues about 13.4. So what net cost of services? So tax revenue, it's typically, tax revenues have a revenue that's harder to, say, change. The expense, the program revenues, you can change, exchange more by, say, increasing charges for services. You have more ability to influence the program revenues than you do tax revenues. But overall, in this ratio, anything below 100% is good. It just means that tax revenues are sufficient to cover current services without dipping into any kind of rainy day fund. So when I was discussing rainy day fund, this is going to be a slide discussing the rainy day fund. So your unassigned fund balance to your annual expenditures in the general fund, the unassigned fund balance, $3 million annual expenditures, has increased to $10.2 million, is a ratio of 29.57%. So that increased from 27 in the prior year. So it's going, the higher, the better. This is, the GFWA, the Government Financing Finance Officers Association recommends about a 20% rainy day fund, and that's about three months. So you're about half over, one and a half times what their recommendation is. So that's good. That's a good place to be. And it seems like it's getting better year to year. The next one. So this is going to be your net pension liability sensitivity analysis. So really, this is going to show you what would happen if the discount rate were to increase and decrease. And the discount rate is, it's determined by CalPERS, and there was, there's a plan to decrease that. There was over a period of time, and this year it was, so last year, this same slide would have said here, it would have said 7.15, but now it says 6.9. They're decreasing in .25% increments. So you'll note that overall, so if you were to decrease that discount rate, so that means it's, you're making more, you're making less money on those assets, that would increase at about $9 million. And if you did the other way around, where you're making more on those assets, you get about 15.9. But looking at CalPERS' current position, I don't expect it to go higher. If anything, it would go lower. So that funded ratio that I did discuss, so miscellaneous, discussing miscellaneous, so the miscellaneous funded ratio, which is the total amount of that fiduciary net position to pay off the liability, is at about 62%. Last year, it was at 70, about 73%, and then the prior year was about 63%. And every year prior to that, it was at about that 63% mark. And the city is making the payments as required by CalPERS with their long-term plan to pay off all the pensions. Even though this is less than 100%, it's still, they're making all required contributions that fit CalPERS' plan to pay off those, those, pay off those benefits. So now on to the net OPEB liability sensitivity. So net OPEB liability sensitivity, you're going to have two different sensitivities. So one sensitivity is going to be your discount rate, and the discount rate right now is 3.8%. You'll note that's less than the discount rate and CalPERS, and part of the reason of that is because if you're not, if you don't have a fully funded trust for, if you don't have a fully funded trust for OPEB, they require you to use more of a municipal bond rate, which is a lot lower than that 7 point, 7 point or 6.9%. So that's why it's a little bit lower here, but you'll see, I think, if you were to go up or down a percent, there is a difference, but it's not as significant as the pension. But you'll see two discount rates, because with OPEB, you've got another piece. You got how much healthcare costs. So as of right now, it's about a 6% rate. So you'll also note, if you were to go up or down a percent on that, what that would be. And there are a lot, I think the sensitivity on this is a lot, it's, I think maybe to the size, it's not as significant as pension, but you'll note here just what it is, what that rate, what that change would be. So audit results. So our opinion, that's a part of our responsibilities. And our opinion on the financial statements, unmodified for all opinions. So this is a clean audit opinion. This is what you, what you're looking for. What that states is that the financial statements are presented, are fairly presented on material specs. Accounting policies have been consistently applied. Estimates are reasonable. Disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statements. And for the scheduled findings and question costs, this is going to be in the single audit, you'll note that there's, there was a material weakness, because working with the client, due to that change in the accounting for grants receivable, we noted that we had to, there was a, we had to make a prior period adjustment to, to adjust that, and I believe that was, that's represented in the single audit and you can, you see it. And I believe, and then the number two is going to be your significant deficiency, that's going to be your delay in financial reporting, and that's required because, single audit, OMB, Office of Management and Budget, it requires you, and Uniform Guidance actually requires you to have that, your data collection form, which you have to do after you issue the single audit, within nine months of the year-end. So that's going to be March 31st. So I know we didn't meet this year, but it seems the progress that we're making on this current year, I think for the next year, I think it's looking pretty good to get that definitely away. So hopefully next year, I think it's looking, and that prior period adjustment was fixed, so that's not like an ongoing thing that's corrected. And I think that general accounting, it seems like, is being caught up. So I think the city's doing a pretty, pretty good job there. I think they got a new, a new accountant or staff, more staff that's able to help Dave, because he's, it seemed like there was limited staff, and it seems like they're catching up quite a bit of stuff, so it's looking good. So, yeah. So any, some other results noted, no disagreements with management. There was no accounting issues and no inappropriate activities were noted. So to the single audit, well, I just gave you the findings that would be included in the single audit, we'll circle back on the, on the opinions for the single audit report. So for our internal, over on our audit report. report. So for our internal, for our, over on our audit report, over the internal controls or financial reporting and compliance and other matters, we issued an unmodified opinion. This is going to be a clean opinion. This means that everything was presented fairly, and accounting estimates, policies, and disclosures were proper. And then compliance for each major program, each major federal program, and on compliance, control over compliance of those programs, also unmodified, clean opinion. So this year, the two programs that we audited were, were the Federal Transit Cluster and the ARPA funding. That's going to be your Corona by State and Local Physical Recovery Fund. So we did actually audit about 67, 67% of the total federal expenditures for the year. I think that's everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you have questions from the council? No? All right. We'll open this for public comment.
Surprisingly, nothing.
Thank you.
Yes.
Nobody? All right. Seeing none, we will bring it back to council. Well, thank you for that report. We really appreciate that. Looks like everything's in good order. Yay. Yes, kudos to our finance director. And we will move on to item seven, consent calendar. Does the council want to pull any items from the consent calendar? None? Okay. We will take public comment on the consent calendar. Okay, seeing none, we will bring this back to council.
I'll move consent.
I'll second.
I have roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
Mayor No.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will move to item eight, public con, comment, non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that was, went in, within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda, except by special action of the city council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit speakers' time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals, or make comments which are slanderous, or may invite, invade an individual's personal privacy. We will open this for public comment. Seeing none? Okay. We do, we do. Okay.
Hello there. I was here about two and a half years ago. Talked about a house that we all have in our town. It's 3113 Clark Street. It's right next to Rotary Park. I've talked to Mr. Morris about it several times. Me and him have like a good relationship about the whole ordeal. I'm just wondering what is the, the next process, because the, the homeowner has moved out. It's red-tagged. Nobody lives there. People do come pilfer the house still. Not to, I live right next door at 3105. Not to the fact that I think I need to call the police every time. I've talked to Joe about it. I've talked to Mr. Morris about it. Not that I need to call the police every time when somebody just comes and wants to, I mean, pilfer the house. I mean, it's just, it, it's nonsense to me if they want to make a dollar and go down the street and do whatever, because the guy, Charlie Lance, that owns the house, he could care less about the house. I've talked to the family members. They don't care about the house. The house is just sitting there vacant. Just recently, we've turned, well, you guys can turn off the water, but I turned off the water to the house, and it's been going on for like two and a half years. People were using the house because the water was on on the house, but there's no power to the house. But there are people using it, and if you've, of rest, people that use the house for whatever, to sleep there, whatever. My, my, the process was that the city attorney was going to take receivership over the house, and I've been told that for probably almost a year and a half now. And the house is still vacant. The weeds are growing really, really high. I get contacted by, since I live next door, I guess I'm the one, I get contacted by neighbors and people that use the park, and what's going on with the house. People want to buy the house. I think they think they could flip it, but I don't think they can. It's just, I just, and it still stinks. I mean, Joe and Cleve were there, well, sorry, sorry, Mr. Morris, were there. They got a dumpster there. We took a day, me and these guys took a day, and we filled up the dumpster. But that was just half of the garbage I was there, because they had no garbage service. So it had piled up there for a long time. So the, my, my, my thing is, can we step forward and like, you guys take receivership of the house so that, you know, somebody could move in, or somebody could take care of the house? Because the weeds are really high. I had to cut down weeds on my, well, bushes on my side of the house, and got poison oak from it and everything. So I just want to know what's the, what's the step that we could go forward and, and, and keep going with this house. I mean, it's right next to your park. The park's a great park. I use the park. I just want to know what's the next process. I mean, I just want to push the process forward. I mean, I've done a lot of emails. I mean, I have tons of emails. I just want to see what the next process. I mean, I, I think you need to just take care of the house, either level it, or do something to the house. I mean, it still stinks. There's garbage there. We couldn't load up all the garbage in the dumpster. I mean, it was a big dumpster, and we filled it up. But there's still more there, and there's people coming there to pilfer it. So, I mean, just the, you know, I just, trying to push the process.
Thank you.
That's what I'm doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comment. Does anyone else have a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back. Does staff want to make a comment?
Yeah. Just briefly, I will comment that we do have the agreement for, it's not our city attorney that we're working with, but it's a private attorney that does these receiverships. We got the agreement. It was our intent to have it on this agenda, actually, and it, Pierre, as you can see, is not here tonight. We do plan on having it on the next agenda to allow that attorney to move forward with the, with the receivership, which will basically take possession of the home, put it on the market, and the funds will pay for any costs that we have going forward. So we are working on that. It has taken longer than we had hoped, but it is, and I, we do talk on a fairly regular occasion, but I apologize for that. But we do hope to have that agreement, not a promise, but it's planned, it's scheduled to be on our next agenda for the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Once the agreement is done, is there any plan to go in and clean up the property in the process?
We should probably save that for the next meeting, discussion of this.
Since it's going to be on the next agenda.
Well, I understand that.
We can't pre-discuss the agenda items, John.
I've been asking a question here. You know, okay.
All right.
I'll assume the answer is yes.
If you want to stop and see me, I can talk to you about what.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any written communications?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right. We will move to item nine, no items pulled from the consent calendar ordinances. We have none tonight. Public hearings, we have none tonight. Item 12, we have one item. 12.1, consider approving a resolution directing staff to proceed with the deprogramming and liquidating funding terminating the Cedar Ravine Road multimodal study project and terminating the current consulting service agreement with Civic, Civic Well. Ms. McConnell.
Thank you, Mayor No, and council members. This item is unfortunately one that I'm not pleased to be presenting to you this evening. The item before you proposes to deprogram a previously approved CIP project, liquidate the project funds, and terminate a consulting services agreement. In 2022, staff applied for and has awarded state Sustainable Communities Competitive Grant Funding for the Cedar Ravine Multimodal Study. It was planned to be a planning-level study that would have evaluated and made recommendations for improved multimodal access and connectivity in the Cedar Ravine Corridor. In October of 22, the city and Caltrans entered into a restricted grant agreement establishing the terms of the project funding. The agreement also included a very detailed scope of work to be completed by the project. Part of that scope of work was public outreach and project management services that were going to be provided by Civic Well, a nonprofit organization. On December 12, 2023, the city council approved a consulting services agreement with Civic Well. Soon after that, work began, and Civic Well prepared a request for proposals for the city to hire a consultant to perform the multimodal study. The consultant's scope of work in the RFP was in alignment with the very detailed scope of work in the grant agreement. On March 13, staff released a request for proposals, and Civic Well helped facilitate distribution of the RFP to more than 50 consulting firms that provide planning study services. The RFP was also publicly available on the city's website. The proposal, by the proposal due date on April 10, no proposals were received. Staff speculated that the amount of funding available was not in alignment with the scope of work required by the restricted grant agreement. Basically, we're asking too much with not enough funding. Staff met with Caltrans planning staff in May to discuss our concerns and figure out the path forward. On that call, Caltrans confirmed that the project appears to be significantly underfunded. They said a project of this size would probably have about double the budget. They also informed us that the scope of work in the grant agreement could not be reduced, and there was no additional grant funding available. They said if the project was determined to be infeasible to implement, the city would not have to pay back the funds spent to date, which currently totals a little over $10,000. And then, subsequent to that meeting with Caltrans, Civic Well informed staff that they would soon be dissolving as a nonprofit organization, and they could not carry out the remaining services in their consulting services agreement. So for these reasons, staff is recommending termination of the agreement with Civic Well, deprogramming the remaining project funding, and terminating the project. Should the city council direct staff to proceed with these actions, staff will continue to seek the right type of funding for a project in the Cedar Ravine Corridor. The need for Cedar Ravine Road to have sidewalk bicycle facilities and safety improvements has already been identified in various planning documents, including EDCTC's Placerville Active Transportation Plan, the city's non-motorized transportation plan, the city's pedestrian circulation plan, and the city's local road safety plan. The engineering department believes that what we need is an engineering feasibility study to evaluate the corridor constraints and engineering details so that we can figure out how to move the project forward, more so than a planning study of alternatives. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. We have questions from the council?
Why did Caltrans fund this in the first place? I mean, you know, you don't wake up one day, look at the scope and go, wow, this is a lot of scope. And, you know, I mean, I write a lot of these things, and usually they'll come back to you and say, you know, you might want to ask for more money, or whatever. So what, what happened there?
I'm not too familiar. That was before I was involved in the project. I, I don't really know. Maybe it was just hopeful. I don't know if they really understood the constraints of the corridor, because, you know, on a planning-level study, it's really easy to say, okay, we want to have sidewalk.
Yeah, good, yeah.
But the, the real details are, what are we going to do with the creek? What are we going to do with the water line?
Right, right.
All of those.
Okay. All right. That's it.
David? No. Okay, we'll open this for public comment.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville and frequent traveler on Cedar Ravine. And I have looked at that for several years and thought, this is absolutely a nightmare project. And I agree with our, with Melissa. We really need an engineering study, because that one, that's more than just figuring out that the public would like to have something done there, and that we also should have some bicycle and pedestrian. That whole corridor has so many constraints to it. And so I think this is a wise move by the city, especially if, if the contractor was going to do this, is dissolving, there's no point. And I think truly, we need an absolute, really good engineering study on that to figure out what can we do to preserve the quality of the creek, to preserve the houses that are there and the people who live there, and to make that so that it's not a danger to drive on. There is no bank. There is nothing to prevent you from driving into the creek. And in fact, we had somebody delivering propane who went over one of those bridges, and the bridges was, bridge was not sufficient to hold the truck, and the truck collapsed into the creek, and we had quite a mess on our hands to clean that one up. So, and that was what, a year ago or so? And so, I mean, this is going to be a real, this is going to be a very expensive and a real nightmare project. If we thought Broadway sidewalks was bad, no, Broadway sidewalks would be a piece of cake. It'll be a cakewalk compared to what we need to do for Cedar Ravine. So, yeah, we need to get really, really good planning in, in ahead of that one, and good engineering, so that we really do know what we're going to get into. Because we've got water lines, sewer lines, a road that's insufficient. It's a mess. And it provides the access to our community hospital. That's the main access for the, for the, you know, for going up to, to Marshall Hospital. It's the one the ambulance is used, and the public uses. And it's just, you know, there's a lot of things to consider there. So I think this is a good, it's a good option. Sometimes when you run into the brick wall, the best thing to do is back up and think about it.
Thank you, Sue. Yes, the creek is definitely going to be a challenge there. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council.
So I'm assuming this is a, back off and revamp the project and try again? Okay.
Do a motion.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Just answering questions. I'll second.
Can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor No. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Clarici.
Aye. I knew, I knew what you meant.
Mayor No.
Aye. Thank you. All right. We will move to item 13, El Dorado Transit Authority. We approved a revised salary schedule. Transportation Commission?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. We reprogrammed unused money into the Missouri Flat Overcrossing, the Broadway Sidewalk Project, and the Mound Springs Bridge Replacement. All right, LaFco?
We had a couple of administrative items, but no public hearings.
Okay. SECOG, Councilmember Sherrigos is not here. We'll revisit that. Pioneer?
Yeah. Actually, the board discussed the rate decrease that PG&E put out, and then how we were going to adjust our rates for the same. They're bringing that back to us, so hopefully we have a little bit more information after this next meeting.
Thank you. Placerville Fire Safety Council, we received a presentation from Mark Egbert on the City of Placerville Wildfire Resilient Strategy Technical Advisory Committee meeting. Okay, opportunity knocks.
We had a special meeting I was not able to attend related to funding for a winter shelter. My understanding is the West Slope applicant did not have a location for their shelter on that, so there were some contingencies placed on whether or not they would receive funding, if they could figure that out. And then, in our general meeting, we received several updates. Nothing of note for the City of Placerville, and our only action item was an administrative item on how to deal with special meetings when we don't have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, item 14, requests for future agenda items. Does the council have any? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item 15, city manager and staff reports. 15.1, acknowledge and file the HDL Sales Tax and Economic Reports for quarter ending March 31, 2024. Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mayor No, members of the council. So this isn't a real exciting report, because it involves decreases. However, the decreases are getting smaller. So we're hoping eventually in the next quarter or two, we'll have a positive increase for you. But it's been almost two years of flat or negative. So we're making it through. As you know, your Bradley Burn Sales Tax, which is your general fund sales tax, represents 57% of your general fund. So it's very important that these sales taxes remain healthy. But for the quarter ending March 31, which we have for you here, on the cash basis, it decreased a little over $48,000 or 3.3%. However, that included prior period adjustments and aberrations. When you remove those aberrations, it actually ends up being about a 2.4, slightly lower decrease, if you will, or 34,000. The decrease is primarily due to decreases in auto transportation, which are really affected by the higher interest rates and higher insurance premiums right now, the state and county pool, which is online sales tax, and fuel and services. So we, we transitioned to the winter blend, which is a little cheaper, so prices went down a little bit. Consumption's gone down due to increase in EVs and those kind of things. So we, we assumed a 0.56%, less than 1% increase in sales tax for that quarter. So we, we assumed a .56%, less than 1% increase in sales tax for that quarter, or $8,000. And so it was a $34,000 swing down, so the, the net difference is about $42,000, or 2.96 percentage points below budget. El Dorado County fared better, they had a 1.2% increase, which is pretty much flat. SAC region was actually zero, uh, and then the state of California was more like us, .2% negative. We appreciate all of our businesses, especially our top 25. And this, this quarter, we actually added Office Max, ironically. They actually closed the first quarter, but we suspect because they liquidated all their inventory, their sales popped up one last time. So that, this is the last quarter that you'll see Office Max on there. Save Mart was also added, Shell, Rite Aid dropped off because of the closure of that one store on Fairlane, we still have our Broadway store, thankfully. Sierra Nevada Tire dropped off, and then the Smoke Shop of Placerville dropped off. So, uh, it's important to note, oh, I already mentioned that, um, never mind. Measure H and J also performed at a lower rate. For example, Measure J on the cash basis experienced a $15,000 decrease of 4.3%. When you take out the aberrations, it actually ends up being about a $16,000 decrease or 5%. We assumed a $775 increase or .23%. So the, it's about a $17,000 below budget, or 5.23 percentage points. Uh, again, this is primarily due to autos and transportation decrease and general consumer goods. And that's for Measure H and L, and J. And then you also have your recovery report, and so HDL does perform audits of merchants that are underreporting or not reporting at all. And, uh, in 2023, HDL recovered $36,111 just in Bradley Burn sales tax. Since 1991, HDL has recovered, um, a little, well, almost $1.6 million, and then, in Bradley Burns only, and then about $15,000 in Measure H, J, and L, additional revenues there. And, um, you also have the Trends and Economic Drivers Report. And the good news is, there's a little up and down compared to the April report, but overall, it's pretty much the same. It hasn't changed much, so it hasn't gotten worse. So that's the good news. But that's for the entire state. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open this for public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring this back to the council. Thank you for that. And that brings us to item 16, upcoming items. I'll let everyone read those for themselves. And that brings us to item 17, adjournment at 5:53. Thank you.